Good evening, Madam President. You're all set.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Welcome, everyone who's watching us. I'm going to turn this over to our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Bedea.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, Board Trustees and to our community faculty and staff. Happy Spring. We have several updates for the board this evening, so give me a second so I can begin to share my screen. Okay. Consistent with every board meeting we've had this year, we have several updates for Operation Reopen. As you can see here, these are several. So we've gotten a lot of inquiries regarding academic testing, and I just want to make a couple of comments related to the information that you see here. As a district, we don't agree with the state exams. We think they, at this particular time, they're misguided. While we understand that the federal government certainly has the right to mandate school districts to take the exams, we do recognize the logistical concerns, the pressure that comes with state exams, any given year, certainly during a pandemic. A couple of key points. This is a federal requirement. As of right now, we are still in a process. My team and I have been in contact with the State Education Department to better understand what is and isn't allowing various processes, the style, the format, the logistical components that districts in New York State will have to adhere to related to the administration of these exams. So that is ongoing. We hope to have another conversation, another planning session tomorrow as it relates to how the test will be administered. We do know that Regents exams in August have been canceled, and what we also know is that the accountability is not coupled with these assessments. The CDC has recently updated its guidance regarding social distancing. We have communicated that information with our community. And as most of you are fully aware, this information is national at this point, and the district will and has begun the process of reallocating space in each of the different classrooms. Some good news. Yesterday, officially, the yellow zone designation was lifted. And just a couple of things of what this might mean. Well, the first is around district gatherings, and we certainly have gotten questions regarding graduation. So as we indicated in a previous update, we have teams of students and adults who have been meeting now for quite some time in preparation of graduation, because we obviously want this to be a special ceremony for our scholars. So we are a bit more optimistic today than we were several months ago, that we will be able to have an in-person graduation. Again, I can't give you more details at this point, because we're still waiting information from the state. But we do suspect if things continue to go the way they have been, that we will have bigger gatherings. And the format of the graduation is something that's being planned. Will it be a traditional graduation, or will it be a hybrid of something traditional and something that we had last year? I will say, while last year's graduation was different, we got a lot of positive reviews. Families and students did appreciate the how intimate and how how parents and family members were able to celebrate and be on Academy Field with their graduate. We also know, as a result of the yellow zone designation being lifted, that it's a hopeful sign to our economy in the Hudson Valley for bigger gatherings. As it relates to athletics, and what we've begun to communicate out, is that now our children will be able to practice and have home competitions here in the district on their home field. And that was a disadvantage to our students, and I just want to publicly, again, thank my colleagues from around Orange County for supporting us. We've had several games in Monroe, and many of the other superintendents were very willing to allow us to use their facilities in order for our children to have a competition. And to the many parents who have reached out regarding being able to see their senior for the last time on Academy Field or on any one of our other facilities, we will be allowing two spectators per any CSD athlete. All right, so we recognize this is important to you. This is the last time you're going to see your child in an NFA uniform competing, and we want you to have that, we want you to have those memories. So at this point, we still have to adhere to social distancing. So if you are attending and you are one of those individuals, we are going to ask you, if you're with a member from the household, then you guys can sit together, but you should be, you know, practicing the three Ws and washing your hands, wearing your mask, and watching your distance. So we want this to be a positive experience for you. We'd ask that you please adhere to the mitigation strategies. We also communicated with families, faculty, and staff where we are in our planning for Operation Reopen. And so at this point, when we get back from April 5th, all of our schools will be offering four days of instruction to those families who opted for in-person instruction. We will continue to honor our families who have opted for 100% virtual through the rest of the school year. During the summer, we will communicate the plans for September. We're not there yet. Obviously, we're trying to close out the school year on a positive note. And lastly, we have not made a decision yet as to when or if or if the district will transition to five days of instruction. There's a lot that we have to consider in that decision, so it's not as easy as just flipping a switch. As my colleague indicated today, in some cases, we are five, 10 times the size of other districts, so things that they can do, we can't, and vice versa. But we will continue to reopen schools safely. That will be the number one mission of Operation Reopen. And if there's a way to do it safely, then it will be considered. But at this time, we don't have a date for when or if we go five days. We rescheduled our town hall for tomorrow at 6:00 as an opportunity to get more families involved. We've had very good turnout for our town hall, sometimes upward of 1,000 people. And we're really appreciative of that. I think it's telling of the signs that, you know, parents very much want to be connected. They want to be engaged. They want to know what's happening. But sometimes they can't do it by coming in person. And if there's anything we've learned during this pandemic is that there are different ways we can connect with families to empower them and keep them connected. So as you can see, we've had a number of families submit questions. We will be providing a presentation to them to give them some critical updates, and we will be attempting to answer some of these questions. So we're excited to connect with our with our community and our families in order to close out the school year. Masks are still mandated, so although we're not in the yellow zone anymore, masks still are required. Madam President, any questions or comments?
Yes, I see Mr. Stridiron's hand.
Thank you, Madam President. So on the three-foot social distancing that's approved, a recommendation from the CDC, has the state come back and revised their guidance for the spacing of three feet? Because from what I'm hearing, they have not done so yet.
That is correct. To our knowledge, and it's something that we're waiting for, it's actually something we have requested now a few times, is to see where the New York State Department of Health is on that. We do know, just for clarity purposes, that school districts can go to three feet as per New York State Department of Health. But the difference here is the CDC's newest guidance allows you to go to three feet without barriers. New York State Department of Health allows you to go to three feet with barriers. So again, we're waiting, you know, good question. It is something that we're waiting to hear from the Department of Health.
Thank you, Mrs. Maida.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Bedea, thank you for touching on the testing. I might be stating the obvious, but the thought of exams of any sort is extremely unnerving and for teachers and students. So I just hope as soon as we can hear from the state or and the powers to be, that a decision would be made and be equitable for our students. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Maida, and we share the same sentiments. We understand. I mean, exams have a role, and they're important. We do know that the tests have been modified. Right now, we know that there are going to be multiple choice to be provided in a one-day sitting. So they are going to be different. Nevertheless, it doesn't mean they're not going to be nerve-wracking, and certainly, there are going to be people like you and me and others who feel like there shouldn't be any exams. But we're under federal requirement to do it, and we're going to fulfill that requirement. Not because we want to, but because we have to.
Thank you.
Mr. Levinstein?
Thank you. My question is on the April 5th with four days for all the hybrid students. So there's room and there's availability for all the hybrid students in all the buildings for all the classes?
So, as you know, there are schools that are already four days with the children who have opted in, and the goal is to have all of our schools four days. We're working with our administrators, and again, in certain locations, because we do, we are aware, as you're aware, of parents who want their children in in certain cases where we go below six feet, and that's also a very important point. In some cases, we don't have to go below six feet. That's because the requests in that particular class don't require us to go below. However, in cases where we do, we will have the barriers in place.
But so my question is, though, I know as of now, you may say to someone, I'm sorry, I'm putting you on a waitlist because we don't have the room, but April 5th, we are going to have the room for that?
That is something we're going to continue to work through. What is important here is that every school will offer four days of instruction. It does mean, however, that there may still be some families, and I hope that's not the case, but I want to be realistic at the same time. We are trying our very best to accommodate all families. I believe we will be able to accommodate the majority of them. In any case where we can't, then yes, there will be a waiting list, and but we've made that, you know, we communicated that to families, that we believe in some few cases, there still may be a waiting list. We also know that we're going to treat this on a case-by-case basis. So if a family decides to change their learning model, in that case, they have to reach out to their school principal and make their desire known. Likely, they're going to be put on a waiting list until we can accommodate them. And so this is this is ongoing data collection for us to know if we're going to be able to accommodate everyone who's on a waiting list. The goal is to do so.
Thank you.
This is Maida.
I think we have a board member, Baby Stridiron.
Hi. Mrs. Maida, I see your hand. Do you have another question?
I'm sorry, Madam President. No, I do not at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Stridiron, I'm going to jump in before you and your baby. I'm going to ask two questions. I'm sorry. Dr. Bedea, what is the vehicle to get in on the town hall?
That is, so it's going to be a Zoom. If there are board members that absolutely want to be part of it, we can set you up kind of like we do now, where you're a panelist, so you'll get in. If we hit the 1,000 mark, we're going to have to push it to YouTube.
Thank you, and I too, as Mrs. Maida does, is having a very hard time with this testing. To me, it's inhumane and unfair and unequal the way it's being done. I don't see how they're going to do the nicest lot in one day. That's the test for the ENL students, the non-English speaking students. So I think a lot of the stuff that we're hearing, not from you, but from the state and from the feds, is not true. Because they can't do that test in one day. My last thing is, gotta have those barriers. Three feet, six feet, gotta have those barriers. I'm a real barrier proponent, so that's my personal thing. Mrs. Santiago, I see your hand.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask that the board be provided with a summary of the questions and answers provided from this meeting. I read Dr. Pidiya pointed out that he already received 154 questions. Some will be answered. I'm sure there'll be more during the presentation, but I'd appreciate if whatever documentation is provided after this meeting that we were given a copy. Thank you.
Mr. Stridiron, I see your hand.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two questions. One is the when you have more students coming back into the buildings, I just want to make sure that the situation at one of the schools where we had the staff having their breaks in certain conditions, has that been resolved? And then the situation where, when the board votes on certain things like testing for athletics, it's important that we have as much information as possible to make those decisions. And I've come to know that there were two teams recently that were put into quarantine, but the board was not made aware of that. Is that true, that there were two teams that had to go into quarantine, and what was the result of that? Like, how how did that happen?
Let me, because you asked two questions. Let me start with the first one. So we did look into the first inquiry and concern and have since followed up with those respective schools. At this point, those issues around eating have been resolved, and it'll be something we continue to monitor. Mr. Barrett, can you touch on the second one? And yeah, please touch on the second one.
Are you asking me regarding the two teams that were quarantined?
Yes. You, Mr. Ford, can chime in on that, please.
I believe if I have my information correct, Mr. Ford, you can help me, that it was the JV volleyball. And it was more recent one that I know you're more aware than I am, if you would like to speak to it.
Mr. Ford?
I'm only aware of one team, JV volleyball.
There was a situation that we certainly will follow up with you on with regard to one student on a team that was positive, but I don't believe it had an impact on the team, but I certainly can follow up for you.
The JV football team was not quarantined?
Not to my knowledge, Mr. Stridiron, but I'll follow up if you'd like.
I'm not aware as well.
And I thought we did make the board aware of the JV volleyball. So, yeah, and I'm not aware of JV football, so I'd say.
I see no other questions on this topic. Would you like to move on, Dr. Bedea?
All right, thank you. As you can see, a lot of really important information regarding Operation Reopen. So we're going to move on to the second item, Capitol Project update, and I see Mr. Ramjug is in the room. Mr. Ramjug, do you want to go ahead and kick us off with this important update?
Thank you, Dr. Bedea. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So I'll start with our energy performance contract work. More than half of our school facilities have now been officially outfitted with building automation, with new building automation controls and commissioning, and the operations of the systems are reflecting that performance. Next, as of right now, Horizons is finishing this week, and then the teams will be moving on to both South as well as Heritage Middle School. In parallel with that, on EPC, the Amendment 3 work which the board approved in the recent past is now up to the New York State Education Department for review and approval. And we anticipate that being completed within three to four weeks, at which time the work will begin to be scheduled to be performed. On the Capitol side, with each passing day, we draw closer and closer to the districts taking possession of NFA pool. As of this past week, all of that commissioning work had been completed. The crews are continuing to clean surfaces, and also starting this week is the professional development for Mr. Velez's staff to learn the operation of the new pool processing equipment as well as the mechanical equipment. And that will be ongoing with continuous opportunities for development. Also, on the Capitol side, we have Capitol Design progress on New Windsor as well as Vales Gate, and here to present that to you this evening is Ms. Lauren Tarzio from Clark Patterson Lee. Lauren?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us tonight. As Roger said, we are going to give you an update on New Windsor and Vales Gate, and if we can start the presentation, looks like we're having some trouble. With New Windsor, in a minute, you should you should see an image of the exterior. We're moving forward with user group meetings. We feel it's very important for all the buildings to have some input in some of the design that we're doing. As you know, at New Windsor, we're doing a fairly large addition for gym, music room, and classrooms. There we go. So on this slide, what you're seeing is an exterior view, which shouldn't seem unfamiliar. This is the version that the users like the most, so we have an underground outdoor recreational area. You know, the gym is in the background, and then the classroom spaces are in the foreground. But you'll notice, and I think it's pretty obvious in these images, as we've refined the site a little bit better, this site, as you know, slopes down as you get further back into the site. So there is a fair amount of retaining walls and stairs, and we're working through the ADA accessibility of all of that. So that's what you're seeing here. If you want to move to the next slide. So just a quick refresher, you know, what you're seeing in blue is the addition on the lower level, so it's an entry lobby. What we're able to derive from the user group meetings is that the gym teachers really wanted to utilize that outdoor space that's covered, so we're able to provide them storage that's built in underneath. That's what you're seeing in that large blue square there. Another desire of the building is to have the classrooms clustered in by grade. Right now, they're kind of scattered throughout the building, so the blown-up image on the right is showing the lower-level area as the first-grade cluster. So first grade would now be located on the lower level. We've also provided space for the psychologists and OTPT space in the former music room, so the music rooms will be moving into the addition. So we're able to give them a little bit more elbow room. That was something else we we got some great information on the user group meetings. Moving up a level, the addition again is in blue. We have a renovation of the cafeteria space, and we'll be renovating what was going to be the library. The library will be moving downstairs. On the blown-up plan, you'll see the kindergarten spaces clustered in one wing. One of the requests from the users is to have toilet rooms right in the kindergarten spaces, so we're providing in blue, you'll see an alternate to be able to do that. I'm going to go to the next slide. And then, of course, the blown-up area of New Windsor of the gym space. So here, we're looking at the fifth-grade classrooms being in the addition. We've expanded on the main office and the nurse's office, providing them with an isolation room that has close to direct access to the exterior. And of course, the music rooms have developed a little bit further. So with New Windsor, we're looking for maybe one more user group meeting just to confirm that, you know, the plans look like what we discussed, and everybody's happy with them. We'll move on to design development phase. Next slide. So Vales Gate, here's an image of your new entrance canopy at the main entrance. So we went with a very modern look, kind of like a wing. You'll see some new signage at the top of that, and we've already gotten some feedback to enlarge that signage, so we'll be working on that. Next slide. And just a quick refresher, we have some movement of some of the spaces in this building. Everything in blue is what's proposed to be renovated. So it starts with the library renovation, and we'll be taking over the faculty room to enlarge the library. So the faculty room will then have to move to the other side of the library where a current science room is. That science room will move across the hall to where there is a 12-on-one classroom. And the nurse's office is proposed to be renovated. Of course, we have updated finishes in the cafeteria and then the new the new addition, which will have the ENL suite, psychology suite, reading, music rooms. Excellent. So Vales Gate has been meeting with, those users have been meeting with the furniture vendor, Meteor, which the district has contracted with. If you recall, there is a reserve fund for furniture and painting as part of this referendum. So what you're seeing here, some images that Meteor has provided. These are just some examples of some of the furniture layouts that we've been talking about. A lot of the furniture is very flexible, mobile, cleanable. They're very appropriate to each age group. And we're trying to standardize around certain types of furniture so that they're very interchangeable district-wide. So that's just a quick update. I'll open up to any questions.
Board members, questions, comments? I see no hands. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you both. And before we transition to the next presentation, I just want to quickly note that the pool project is coming to a close. We hope to have a re-grand opening next month. And right now, things are looking really nice. It's a beautiful, beautiful space. I know our students, our athletes, our educators are going to be extremely happy with the outcome. So stay tuned. We'll be putting out some information about it, also sharing some videos of the new space. So that way, we can get back to winning state championships and giving our children first-class experiences. Okay. That's my plug for the pool. We're going to move on, Madam President, to to the next presentation. I'm going to share my screen, so to our tech support, no worries. I'll present and control the presentation from that standpoint. I do want to acknowledge that I'm getting some people reaching out saying that our presentations tonight are very choppy for some reason. I don't believe it's anything on our end. It might be a YouTube issue. At least everyone who's been talking right now, no one's been choppy, and it's been pretty fluid. So we're going to, we got a team that's monitoring to see if our audience, people who are watching, are still experiencing any tech difficulties. It appears to be a YouTube issue, but we're not 100% sure at this point, so we're going to proceed. Okay, so we are at the next phase of the budget process. Just to our community and those who are able to watch, we are still in the draft phase. A formal recommendation has not been provided to the board yet. We do suspect that will be happening shortly. So tonight is still a draft, and we've been responding to the board's feedback from previous board meetings. So as it's been now widely published, the American Rescue Plan has been officially signed into law, which is good news. It's something that we've been waiting for. So I need to preface this information by highlighting with the fact that we are still waiting for more clear details. Okay, what I can share with you is what's been published nationally, and that is, we know that $123 billion of this money will go towards education. We know it's the largest one-time investment, and we also know this is a targeted one-time revenue. Now, that's really important. In our last presentation, we talked about In our last presentation, we talked about potential concerns of a fiscal cliff. All right, and so that's that's very prudent on my team and on the Board of Education. Pretty much every state in New York needs to prepare itself, understanding that this is one-time revenue. And what we understand as of now, and we recognize that people have lots of questions regarding this, so do we, that this is a one-time revenue to be spent over three years. This money is targeted, all right? And again, as we wait for those critical details, what we know at this point is that we are supplementing programs, right? So we know 20% has to go towards academic recovery or learning loss. We know this money needs to be earmarked for summer school and after-school programs and morning programs and Saturday programs. We know the money can be used for mental health services, additional technology, so that way children continue to have access. It could potentially go towards improving facilities. We've had a lot of discussion, this board has had a lot of discussion way back in the summer and fall about ventilation. So this money can be used for that, as we understand at this point. And it's to get schools open. All right, so as I indicated in the previous presentation, we're working towards that, but we're going to do it safely. And I and I understand, I hear from parents every day, other school districts are open five days a week. When can my child get in? And just I assure you, my team is working diligently, our principals, our administrators are working so hard to make that a possibility. And and we appreciate the grace that you've given us to do this in the safest way we can. Nevertheless, this is federal money that is one-time, that can be used over three years, targeted in a very specific way. I should also note before proceeding is that you may recall that we are we were supposed to receive previous federal money that the district has not received yet. While it's, you know, it's it's good to know that something's coming, we haven't received previous stimulus money as well. So when will this money arrive? We're not 100% sure. And again, we're waiting for previous money that was supposed to come to us that has not yet. Just a quick recap on priorities, all right? So as you can see, as it relates to Imagine 2025, for teaching and learning, we're going to continue to scale our curricula in ELA and math. We are in the process now, the early onset process of culturally responsive learning. And the feedback is coming in and it's it's very positive, so we're excited to see that. And this is a commitment of our Board of Education, it's a commitment from me that we're not going to talk about this work, we're going to do the work. And so I'm excited to hear and see what I've been observing over the last several weeks. And then, as you could tell from what I just indicated, we have to focus on regression. And we're going to be creating a task force to help us over the next several years. This is not going to be fixed in a year. Addressing learning loss will take time. And we may not know the true impact of this just yet. So I don't want anyone thinking, okay, you're getting some federal money to address summer programs and weekend programs and what have you. You know, what's going on? How come we're not seeing results early? That's a slippery slope. This is going to take time. And I would further say how we use the money is particularly important. Our youngest scholars did not have a an experience into the educational system like you and I had. These are the youngest learners who are just learning how to put letters and sounds together, who are just learning how to understand texts and basic math. And so we can't, in the spirit of trying to do a number of things, not focus on our youngest scholars. And then I would go a step further. Even the children who may have experienced kindergarten last year and then moved on to first grade, they still need to become a focus. Our three through five need to become a focus. So again, we don't know how much money we're going to get right away, but we will, you know, we're going to plan and put something in place that we believe will be robust to help us move in the right direction. We know wellness has to be a priority. So the mental health and social emotional learning needs of our students is something that this federal money will allow us to prioritize. And so we are going to look at various services and programs that we can bring into the district that we might not have right now. As I indicated with the town halls, and since the spring, we have had phenomenal turnout. We have had a lot of input and feedback. And I ask our families, our faculty and staff to continue to do so. But if we're going to bring our families and bring them in and make them feel like partners, then we have to accelerate family-community engagement. And that means we have to continue to look at flexible opportunities for them to be involved. One way we could commit to that is to say that any of any event that we host must have an in-person and a virtual opportunity. So that those families who can't come in person, don't lose out. And then from a health and safety, an operation standpoint, COVID-19 recovery is going to be ongoing. And we believe that is going to take place over several years. So how we position ourselves today to rebound from this is going to be hypercritical. Dr. Spindler?
Thank you, Dr. Pritia, Madam President, Board of Education, for giving me this opportunity to share with you this proposed budget. This slide here shows our our budget process for senior staff starts as early as November. And one of the first steps is to roll over the current year budget to a new budget. And you have to place your contractual obligations, including steps and salaries, your anticipated range of benefits that will increase, your BOCs, amounts that will increase your utilities, your mandated contracts, such as your general liability insurance increases. And you, when we did that budget to budget, we were at a 4% gap of $11.5 million before we started to look at where we could reduce. And I'm taking you through the budget story of senior staff of how we we've come to present to you the 1.5% on our last meeting. Generally, over the past nine years, we we were hovering over 3.1%. So we were trying to take a conservative approach of the 2%, but then when we realized we were going to have the pandemic adjustment to our revenue, we quickly realized that we needed to present a budget that was much more conservative at 1.5% with a 1.84% levy. Tonight, we're presenting a 1.32%, which is a 3.7 budget to budget. Next slide. So this is a comparison of our tax levy from year to year. What we could have levied and what we could have increased in revenue per year, as this board knows that we did do a 0% levy the past five years, and presenting tonight a 1.25% levy, which would yield 1.3 million in lieu of the 2 million, which created a gap of $652,307. The 1.25% levy of annual cost for estimated assessed values in the different municipalities in which we collect school taxes from is listed here in the slide and ranges from $32 to $61. So budget to budget, Dr. P?
Yep. So the board had a consensus and told us that you guys were not comfortable with the 1.84. You said to come back with a lower amount of a tax levy. We landed on 1.25%. And Dr. Spindler just highlighted the new gap that that created. And as we took into account how to reduce the budget, an additional, you know, several hundred thousands of dollars, we were able to do so. We're going to show you what we reduced in order to get there, in order to close the budget again today. So officially and formally, we are presenting you a draft budget that is balanced again. And that does take into account a lower tax levy amount. It also takes into account the restoring of the SRO.
So the budget reductions that we used, we did have to reduce additional vacancies. And then coupled with that, the benefit savings that we would receive from those vacancies. We also looked at our salary breakage. So of the retirees that we will be hiring back, we would have to offer a new recruits a lower salary than we anticipated. We did a further reduction of field trips of $50,000. We felt that we were able to do that and use some of our deferred revenue and some other grants to try to support field trips rather than our general fund. We reduced curriculum writing by 20,000. We reduced copy paper again by 10,000. We felt that we can conserve there with the surplus of copy paper we'll have this year for being at 50% capacity and the use of the one-to-one Chromebooks. We reduced professional development conferences by another $13,000, anticipating that people will be engaged more on online professional development than traveling, and reduced miscellaneous contracts by an additional 80,000. The gap of the levy and adding the SRO increased us to $715,845, in which you can see that's where we we found the funds to close the gap. So I also wanted to let you know that in this budget right now that's being presented tonight, we are going to preserve positions. And also, we are going to increase, you know, our vacancies or fill in our vacancies. And you can see here, the yellow is indicating the retirees that we will be filling, which is a nurse teacher, a library media specialist, a home economics teacher, an art teacher, a secondary social studies teacher, two LOE teachers, a cosmetology and two teaching aides. We felt through our work of master schedule analysis, whereas we carefully review our enrollment, our class sizes and our course needs, we we would like to sustain programs such as art and home and careers and LOE that we would we would like to fill these positions. Additionally, we have some vacancies this year that we did not fill, that we believe we need to fill next year to support our students. And we will fill a nurse, a physical therapist, a psychologist, a social worker, ESL, secondary bilingual teacher, three LOE teachers, a secondary science, a speech teacher, teaching assistants in special education, three cleaners, a custodian and a supervisor and exceptional learner. So know that these vacancies are not filled by individuals, but we intend to fill them with this budget that we're presenting this evening.
So the task of trying to close a a budget gap two times, you know, this what this story tells us is how the budget's made up. And so we have continued to squeeze as much of our operations, our supplies, our equipment, to the extent we can. And we're hoping through the federal stimulus money that we can take a strong, you know, a real look at how to, you know, provide additional equipment and supplies. But to close the kind of gap that we're facing, obviously, we have to take a look at where the biggest piece of the pie is. And and as we indicated in previous presentations, to close these gaps and do so without laying anyone off is a very intentional strategy on our part, especially during a pandemic, to to ensure no one loses their job. So we are committing to filling various positions, but we're also recommending not filling a number of positions in order to close the gap. So as you can see here, when you look at the previous budget of 287 to this year's 291 recommendation, it's a very conservative 3.7 budget to budget increase for a 1.32%. And we feel this is the the right way to go, given our obligations that were just highlighted, as well as maintaining programs.
So this is another look, I presented this earlier in our budget discussions, but I thought it was important to present again our reserves and where they are at as of 6:30 2020. And what this slide is showing us is in 2019-20, what were the expenses that we incurred? So in essence, I'm showing the liability that we have within these restricted reserves. So on the top there, those reserves only can be spent for those items. And you have to have an estimated required reserve to cover the liability. So that's shown in the third slide, I mean, in the third column. And in the fourth column, it's really an indicator after the liability reserves are kept there or you're able to, you know, pay a payment one year out of that, what's really left over. So in looking at that, that 41 million that's in the reserves, realistically, after liabilities is only about 10 million. We do have our authorized 4% of our budget of 11.4 million in unassigned. What's why is that important to 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 maintain that is, one, first and foremost, is for cash flow purposes. On a biweekly basis, we run payroll, which is approximately $6 million. You have to have the cash flow in there, you know, to be able to cover it because you know that the revenue that we get from our tax basis, from our state aid, it doesn't come in all at one time. We're not whole right at September. There's various times throughout the year that we receive payments, and we have to monitor money that's coming out and coming in in our cash flow basis. And having that in there assists us with if we have a delayed payment of any sort. What also the En aside Fund balance has, it it helps us with our Moody's rating. And our Moody's rating is how we're able to borrow money, how we're able to do our capital projects. And in our in our most recent preliminary discussions about Moody for our bond work that is coming up very shortly, we were we were highlighted there as getting a good rating, a triple A rating to be able to keep the authorized 4%. There's also talk across the state that the state is thinking of authorizing up to 8% next year because they're thinking that if we have surpluses or anticipating surpluses from this year's budget for some COVID's cost savings, they'd like school districts to be able to replenish their unassigned or increase it to 8% because they recognize that the federal government isn't going to be able to keep sustaining us, and they like us to be able to sustain ourselves. I think New Jersey just doubled their cap, and there's discussions that New York will do so shortly. Next slide.
So as you know, the last the last year and this year have been extremely difficult and complex, to say the least. And as we're gearing up to make the final recommendation to you, the reality is there's just still a lot of unknowns. All right, so where are we going to be with transportation and potential liabilities there? Ultimately, what's going to be required for those of you who know anything about grants? There's always some strings attached. What are they? We don't know what they are yet. The governor's proposal is just that. It's just a proposal. So we don't know what's going to come of that proposal because the Assembly and Senate still have to vote and get the state budget approved. What does that ultimately ultimately mean for school districts? This year, they did something that they never did before, and that was they included STAR in our aid. And that just confused and muddied everything. Where are we going to be with expense-based aids? Will they finally approve and create one category? And we showed you the hit to the district of over a million dollars if that is approved in this proposal. Those of you who've been in education long enough know there's always unfunded mandates. So what's the next set of unfunded mandates in order to address learning loss? And will we get all of our aid? And just to be clear, we normally don't. So where will we be this year? Will we actually get all of our aid? And how do we position the district to be whole as we go along? These are critical unknowns. So as we move forward and we ultimately make a recommendation, we're making this recommendation based on the knowledge we have in front of us right now, the work that we've been engaged in now for the last several months, taking into account all of our liabilities, all of our obligations, coupled with this information.
So this slide here is showing us our fiscal year 21 in comparison to our fiscal year 22. And you see that we are pretty much, we're flat in our other revenues, and some of them are actually decreasing. So we, that was very difficult for us to do, and and so that's why we are presenting to appropriate reserves and utilize reserves to help support the budget and to appropriate. and to appropriate fund balance to the next year's budget as well, knowing that we'll have a surplus to be able to do that. What I have highlighted here in red is what I want to caution the board and the community with is I budgeted 100% of what the governor's proposal said that we were going to get. Now, in general, we probably get between 97 and 98%, right? Which would mean that you should budget a little, you know, $2 million less than that. We did it in this case because we were hopeful of more COVID, you know, stimulus money. We were hopeful that with the federal government's help, that the state was going to actually really be able to give us that. Where, like Dr. P said, where we need to caution is our expense aid. So in your expense aid, unlike your foundation aid, you get back a certain percentage of what you spend. And right now, we're not on a trajectory to spend 100% of our transportation. The projection within this state aid revenue category is telling us as if we were going to spend the full $15 million in transportation. And right now, we're only anticipating to maybe spend about 10 million of that. So we may have to come back to the board with that to say, there's even less revenue that we may receive. Do you want to appropriate more fund? Do we have to make further reductions? So if that comes, we will definitely present that to you, but know that we may have to make some more critical decisions if we have reduced state aid.
So as we close, just some key takeaways. In a pandemic, with all of the unknowns that were just highlighted today and in previous meetings, we have presented to you and we will continue to present to you a budget that doesn't result in someone losing their job. An area that I'm not particularly comfortable with, but I understand the situation that we're in, we're increasing the appropriation of fund balance to 3.9, so an additional 2 million from the previous year. Again, the federal stimulus will be used to supplement. Still unknowns on aid, and we're presenting you again a balanced budget. So I just probably will share the obvious, is that this team has been working really hard in a pandemic on presenting a balanced budget to the board that doesn't have any layoffs. It does, I understand, some of you have some very strong feelings about using fund balance at all. I would say to you, under normal circumstances, I wouldn't be recommending this appropriation. And I quite frankly, hope that moving forward, we don't appropriate fund balance. Because, you know, if you remember what we communicated to you last time, we're starting in the hole 3.9 next year. So if there's a way to reduce that, I would much rather do that in order to not put ourselves in a hole the following year. But again, I think we all understand the circumstances that we're under, and that's why we're recommending the increase. And then lastly, just, you know, we're anticipating 30 million. When will we get it? How will it be used? What strings are attached? We understand it's a pass-through, similar to how the previous federal money was provided to states and why we still have not received it. So how will the state government allocate those resources to us? And, you know, while we're not laying off people, while we are filling various positions of people who are retiring and those positions that are vacant, we do anticipate in a very small number to support our strategic plan and to support what's required of us from the federal government that we will have to restore in some cases. And we should look at restoring once we have more information. We have yet to receive concrete information. So I understand, because I've been in a number of conversations, just as you have, there were some errors in previous communications that were reported in the media. There were districts that were missing. There were districts that had inaccurate amounts of stimulus money that they were supposed to get. All we're going off of is what's in the media, and I think you would agree with me. You can't run an organization by what's printed in the media. It's helpful, but we need the concrete details from those individuals who are charged with providing us the resources in order to make the decisions we need to make. So on that note, Madam President, thank you for everyone's attention, and I will turn it back to you.
I see Mr. Stridion has a question.
Thank you, Madam President. So the situation what we have right now is we are planning to have 100% of the students to come back in the fall and probably have 100% of the students, maybe even the summer. So the plan that's presented does not address the students' needs. It's basically saying that no one's going to get, no one's getting laid off, but in reality, the layoffs actually occurred because of the COVID situation. So we didn't have a need for every single one of these positions at the time last year and during this past year. But now, we're going to have a situation where we have the full amount of students back in the schools. They are in a situation where they have lost knowledge. They are behind where they should be, and they will have larger class sizes and less staff to handle the situation. You are putting the staff in the schools at a situation where they will be in a very difficult position to succeed. And I believe the board's responsibility is to put the staff in the position to succeed. The whole point of the budget is to come up with a situation where the students succeed. So what I would like to see is all the positions that are on the breakdown that was FT positions that are on the breakdown, of these positions that are on here, what are the positions that the superintendent deems not needed? Or we just can't afford it based on the numbers? Is there a reason why these cuts are here, other than they're not vacant, they're not filled now? I think they're needed. If you're going to cut 16 teaching aides for special ed, it's going to be a difficult job to have those students to be able to function in a proper environment. These cuts don't make sense educationally. Maybe fiscally they do, but educationally they don't. So I would like to know what the projected surplus is this year because you've said $5 million for transportation, you have $4 million for vacancies. So that $9 million that you didn't spend this year is that your projected surplus for this year? And why can't we use the fund balance for the positions for this year upcoming up and then refund the reserves using the surplus that we had from this year? Thank you.
All right. So a couple of things there, and thank you for your opinion. We put together a budget that is both fiscally responsible and educationally responsible, given the context that we have to operate under. All right. So let's take one of the examples, because if I could reframe your question to say, you know, can you tell me why there's a recommendation to reduce 16 of those positions? All right. Well, let's just say you framed it that way. Well, let's give you a response to that. All right. So can I have Dr. Roman? Can you go ahead and explain why we are recommending not filling those 16 teaching aid positions, please?
Yes. Thank you very much for the question, Mr. Stridion, Dr. Padilla. So as we examine the needs across the district, specifically for our students with special needs, we really wanted to take a look at where there were positions that did not have, that were vacant. And these positions that are being recommended were vacant. Another area too that we actually, and we'll get into that later on, there were some positions that were coded as teaching aides, but they were actually attendance aides and those had to be recoded. But nevertheless, with regards to these specific positions, those were vacant positions that we had.
Dr. Roman, are there any students assigned to those positions?
No, sir.
All right. So these are 16 positions that don't have children assigned to them. So why 16 positions? Well, there are no students assigned to them.
But will they be in September? Because we don't have students in the buildings this past year. When you have a situation where they're coming back in, are you going to have a situation where they're going to need those teachers' aides? You're saying no.
But we're saying that the children, whether they're in person or virtual, who have a teaching aide assigned to them, have them assigned now. So these are 16 additional positions that we're saying to you, we don't need at this time. And if we're going to protect people's position and not lay them off, then we much rather not fill positions where there are no children assigned to them.
That's why I asked whether they're needed. That's...
Yeah, well, that's why I wanted to reframe the question because it's a good question, right? You see 16. Naturally, someone would say, hey, do we need those positions? And I'm saying to you, all of our children who have aides assigned to them have them, whether they're virtual or in person. So these are 16 additional positions that we have to make tough decisions around. In this case, we're saying they don't have kids assigned to them, so we probably should reduce there.
So some of these 16 attendance aides? I heard that from Mr. Roman.
Actually, I misspoke. When we get into the line items, we'll clarify some of the recoding that needed to happen.
Okay, because I would say that to reduce any attendance aides at this point?
No.
Would be a disaster.
That's not the case in this particular situation.
Thank you, Mr. Stridion. I'm going to call on somebody else, okay? Mr. Levinstein?
Thank you, Ms. Manao. So a couple of things that I heard was very good, that there won't be layoffs. I like the fact of what you presented tonight, that positions that you felt needed to be filled, vacancies that needed to be filled. But the most important thing I heard, I believe Dr. Padilla said, was hoping that we do get some additional monies that we may be able to put into the budget, that this is where he would look to fill positions. And I've always thought that for 10 years ago, when we were laying off people, hundreds of people, that we should look to refill positions that may be vacant, may be left open but unfilled. So that was the most important thing that I heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I see Mrs. Mader's hand.
Thank you, Madam President. And mine is very similar to what has been said already, but when we talk about not filling those certain positions, my only concern is about the impact that it might show in programs in our schools. So as long as, I think, we can have that discussion and make sure we're transparent if it has to impact a program or a specific area of a school, that would be my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mader.
Mr. Stridion, I see your hand.
Thank you, Madam President. So regarding the special ed teaching aides, the IEPs right now are currently being designed and voted on by the committees going until April, maybe even May. So how would we even know what the need is for September if those meetings have not completed? If you get to the end of May and you find out you're going to need more, what's going to happen? You have to hire those aides, right?
Yeah, I see some other hands up. I appreciate, you know, your astute awareness of that process because it's been something we've had to engage in year after year. So you're right, the IEP dictates what needs to happen. So Dr. Spindler, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. We anticipate that there may be some shifts in the IEPs, Mr. Stridion, and there are still vacancies for teachers' aides. There were more than 16. So what we did was, we actually had a review of what, who currently, which students currently have aides, which students may not need an aide because they're going to another program, they're phasing out, they're graduating, et cetera. And those teaching assistants can then be repurposed. Additionally, so we do have some vacancies there. Also, a reminder to keep in mind is teaching assistants, we have full-time teaching assistants in our kindergarten program that's not dictated by an IEP. So we would always utilize whatever was mandated or dictated first. But we did leave some funding there for the anticipation of students needing a teaching aide or a teaching assistant next year. Yes, and in the event, like, we had an explosion of meeting it and new enrollment, then that's when you do budget transfers and adjustments to meet those needs. But we did leave what we believe enough to support that.
So is it possible to get an explanation for all these cuts? Whether, what you just said with all these teaching aides, I would like to see that for every single position, an explanation, because to just put it on the list, there's no context there. So it really be helpful for me as a board member to understand the context of why the decision was made.
Dr. Spindler, do me a favor. Use the hand button because it's hard to catch you waving at me, and I'll call on you. Go ahead.
Yes. So I understand your point, Mr. Stridion. Note that we do engage in master schedule analysis as early from November now and where we actually sit down and see how many students we have in each grade level, in each course, and we do a percentage of ratio and to maintain small class sizes and do that. So those positions that you have that were presented to the Board of Education, I assure you that that has been done at each of those levels so that we as a team would be able to speak to them. And that's why today's presentation, we showed to you, we need to fill those positions. In our analysis, we're recommending to fill those other positions. Our analysis also shows which areas we don't need to recommend positions.
Mr. Forget?
Yeah, and Mr. Mclemore can probably share this probably better than I can. Each year, we budget for additional teaching aides and teaching assistants so that students aren't uncovered in the beginning of the year. And we have the opportunity to push an individual in based on unique student needs. And then we assess probably in November, December, whether there are additional positions that need to be removed based on the netting out of unneeded positions. So this is something that we have done in the past, and Mr. Mclemore can explain that further if needed.
Mr. Mclemore, you want to add something? You don't have to.
No, no, Madam President. Mr. Forget has explained it well.
Thank you. I'm going to add my concern. I know that we reduced a number of elementary teacher positions in the last go-round, and now we're reducing more. I do understand that curriculum and instruction has looked at the teacher-student ratio. But I always feel that the lower that ratio is, the better off our kids are in learning their basics and their foundational skills. So I'm hoping that not only the little teeny bits, the kindergarten, first and second graders, but now our third, fourth, and fifth graders, where the academic slump occurs before they go to middle school, we need to really maintain staff at the elementary level at a really good proportion so that the kids get the attention that they really need. And that's where I think our focus should be. So Mrs. Moriarty, I see your hand.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for that statement because I also agree with that. And I want to assure the board and the community that in the master schedule analysis, the average class size at kindergarten and first grade remains at 21, between 20 and 21. But the kindergarten had the teaching assistants to support... Um, but the kindergarten have the teaching assistants to support that classroom number. Um, and at, uh, second through fifth grade, the average class size is between twenty-two and twenty-three across the district.
Thank you, um, and I understand those numbers in some people's opinion are low, but in mind, they're not, they're high. So I'm gonna move to Mrs. M-
Um, well, I, I can't agree more with the two state, with your statement, Madam President. Um, when we talk about regression and we're talking about young, um, learners, it's just vital with, it, it concerns me, even if it's twenty per class, it's still times seven on this FT breakdown. That's a hundred and forty kids, and I think it's really, really important for our young learners. So, um, I'd, I'd like to see that continue to, um, be even be lower, but thank you.
Um, Mr. Stridiron, I see your hand.
Yeah, so what is the projected budget surplus for this fiscal year? We haven't heard that number yet.
Dr. Spindler?
Yes, um, Mrs. Stridiron, I'm predicting that we'll have two percent of our budget at this point. However, please note that, um, the number, the figures that you showed, we had to have some COVID-related expenses that I shared to the board that were on, you know, unanticipated. And I'm having more COVID-related expenses and going back to, uh, forties a week in purchasing desks, uh, for students and purchasing furniture for outside. So some of those surpluses that you indicated here, whether it be for transportation or for vacancies, has to be shifted, um, to spend, to purchase those things. So at this point, um, my conservative, um, fund balance, uh, analysis is approximately two percent of the current budget.
So that would be about five and a half million dollars. Why couldn't we take money from the fund balance for these positions that are being cut, some of them at least, and then refund the reserves using the surplus that we get from this past, this past year? Why can't we do that?
Dr. Padilla?
I see, Dr. Spindler, did you have your hand up?
Go ahead, Dr. Spindler.
Thank you, um, thank you for, for that point, Mrs. Stridiron. I, I'd like to, to just, um, let the board understand that hiring an individual, um, in, in, in funding, uh, positions that we may be recommending or not, that you, you feel that is needed, it's a recurring cost. So taking a five and a half million dollars, right? So you have to think about each individual as a nearly three million dollar investment for the district. So restoring all of those positions and taking it and saying, okay, we wanna restore all these positions with the fund balance and be able to put that back in, we are utilizing, remember, three point nine million of, uh, of appropriating funds uh, to support the budget. We may have to anticipate to support more based on our state aid, but it's a recurring cost that you keep of the life of that employee, right? Which is approximately thirty years. Um, so it's not just a one-time cost. So I, I do wanna preface that.
Mr. Stridiron?
Oh, yes, I, I totally understand it, but this situation that we're coming into is we've never dealt with anything like this before. We have students coming back with needs that we don't even know yet until they get into the buildings. And if we don't have extra staff to deal with the issues that we're gonna have, I, I, I know that it's gonna be one of those situations where you're gonna be scrambling. I'd rather have the additional people in the buildings. I understand it's a recurring cost. But this is like a situation in an emergency room. If you have all these patients you know are gonna be coming in and you're cutting doctors, nurses, and the support staff that's needed to, to handle that operating room, and, but you're keeping people in the offices that, that do all the paperwork, it doesn't make any sense. So I think I'd rather take funding from certain positions that are, can be combined in a, in a central office situation and put all the resources we can into the buildings, into the classroom, and, and forget about, you know, I understand that this is a one-time deal and we may have to lay those people off at another time. But this is an emergency situation and I, I feel it's, it's necessary.
Thank you. Well, let me do this. Thank you for your opinion and I'm gonna move on to Dr. Henderson.
Thank you, Madam President, um, and thank you, uh, everyone for your comments and the presentation as well. Um, I think the overwhelming thing that I'm feeling is that, um, you know, with, with this, uh, given surplus as well as, uh, potential funds coming through, uh, through aid, having positions not filled, um, is difficult to digest while also recommending a tax levy increase. I think that's something we might have to consider. Um, just based as, based on how the community is, is doing right now and the impact that COVID has had on us. Maybe this is something that we need to, um, just consider, at least until the community is a little bit more stable. And then may, maybe moving forward into future years, once we are a little bit more economically stable, the, the increase in tax levy would be a little bit more palatable. Um, I do understand how not increasing the tax levy over, you know, right away would compound over those years and, and reduce revenue, that, that is understood. But I think we just have to consider all aspects of this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Padilla.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Dr. Henderson. And you know, when we get to these points in the budget process, i- it brings out good perspectives and insight. And so I just wanna just thank the board for their comments and questions. You know, we did consider, you know, what would it mean to uh, fill a position to lay them off a year from now or two years from now. And, and in certain cases, I guess, you know, if a board of education is comfortable with hiring someone and laying them off, I would tell you probably would have long-term effects in recruitment. Uh, to know that a district just brings someone on for the short term and then, and then terminates them in the long term. And I, and again, I get it, districts have to do what they have to do when they have to do it. We're facing some fiscal, you know, situations, and I think there are some opportunities with the fact that we are filling positions, coupled with some opportunities afforded to us at least for the next three years with the stimulus money. So I would, I, I agree for the most part, learning loss has to be our focus. So does mental health and social emotional learning. And what services and programs could we engage in? Does it mean we have to have an additional body? Maybe not in some cases, right? Maybe it's the fact that we're able to offer a new service, provide a new program, increase access to summer, weekend, morning, Saturdays, much more than we have now and, and, and maybe different ways than we do now. You know, I think we should strategically look at what potentially can be restored and what is allowed through the federal money. We know that mental health support is allowable. Right? Does that mean we, you know, we bring back a social worker? Potentially. It, it potentially could mean that. It also can mean that and, and a dozen of other, other things. So I think we're in a position where you've asked us to reduce the tax levy. We did that. We increased the fund balance, which I didn't really wanna do, but nevertheless, we did another two million dollars. And there are no layoffs. And I, I get there's gonna be different perspectives on this, but this was a lot of work just to get to this point in order to preserve people's jobs as well as offer academic programming.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Santiago, you had your hand up and then you took it down. Do you have something to say?
Thank you, Madam President. No, I, it's, I think it's what's been touched on just a little bit. I agree with everybody and I appreciate everybody's work. Uh, Mr. Dr. Henderson has a very valid point, uh, in the tax levy, which I voiced in the past. Uh, but to Mr. Stridiron's concern, uh, and, and to all our concerns of recovery for this, for our scholars, um, I just wanted to double check that, that's the plan is to be able to use the stimulus money is to be able to help them, but I think Dr. Padilla just mentioned that. Thank you.
Um, uh, Mr. Stridiron, and then I'm gonna, uh, I'm going to get a consensus on the tax levy.
So basically, you're saying, um, by not really answering the question about using this, the reserve funds, that we can use the reserve from this year to replenish the fund balance that we use for staff for this upcoming budget. So if that is a possibility to do that, because in the end, we have to make sure the kids get the education. And if they don't have the additional people, no matter how many programs you have, you have to have the people to be able to run them. You, you need the people in the building. So I would like to see the fund balance uh, used to have the people on this list, maybe not every single one of them, but the majority of people that work directly with the students uh, used to make sure that, uh, for this budget. So if that's possible, I don't know if we vote on that tonight, if it, two weeks from now, but I would like to see that up for vote.
Um, Madam President, just a quick note on the, on, on his question. Uh, I think those are all things we have to collectively consider as we pro, you know, as we progress through this pandemic. The fund balance, in this case, the surplus in this case, again, it's, it's just another caution flag. We have other liabilities that we have to attend to. So it can't just be hiring, uh, filling positions that are going to be recurring versus things that we have to replenish a reserve for because we have to. So spending ninety-eight percent of the budget and getting to a point where you have a little surplus, last year we almost had none. So the fact that we have some this year allows us to replenish certain reserves where we're required to maintain a certain level. If we can reduce the fund balance, so we're not digging ourselves in a hole, we should consider that. We should consider that, and we should also levy the federal stimulus money to offset some of these, uh, challenges that we have.
Thank you, everyone. This was a really good conversation. I'm going to ask for a consensus on a one point two five tax levy, one point two five percent tax levy. So I'm gonna call on you. You say yes or no? Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
No.
Mrs. Burton?
No.
Mr. Walker?
No.
Uh, where am I? Mrs. Maida?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
No.
Mrs. Santiago?
No.
And I say yes. What's the tally, um, Mr. McCoy?
You have four yeses and five nos, ma'am.
Okay, so Dr. Padilla, you're back to the drawing board, unfortunately.
All right, can we, uh, let's just kinda strategize on what that means cuz there's implications. So you're looking at a little over seven hundred thousand dollars of a new gap.
No, it's actually, yeah, it's over a million dollars, Dr. P.
So.
One, yeah.
Yeah, uh. What do we do, right?
So, can I, can I, um, put a, a suggestion out there? Can I get a consensus on a one percent increase? Uh, we're reducing it and reducing it either a zero or a one percent. I, I really think that maybe that'll give you some direction.
Thank you. Zero or one would help us, and then I can quickly just talk about the consequences of that.
Okay, Mr. McCoy, you're gonna, you're gonna keep the tally for me, okay? Mr. Levinstein, zero or one?
One.
Mr. Stridiron?
Zero.
Ms. Burton?
One.
Mr. Walker?
One.
Uh, Mrs. Maida?
One.
Mr. Howard?
One.
Miss, uh, Dr. Henderson?
Zero.
Mrs. Santiago?
Zero.
I say one. What's the tally?
You have three at zero and six at one percent, ma'am.
Okay, so you got some direction there, Dr. Padilla.
Okay, uh, just, just to kinda publicly just share, and, and while this is not a, a final recommendation, uh, there are a few ways to close the gap that we have. So we now have a new gap that needs to be closed. Uh, we could not fill additional vacancies to close that gap. Uh, that's one approach. We can have appropriate more fund balance as another approach. Uh, we can, I mean, we have already as a district-wide strategy, reduce operational expenses to probably historic levels. Uh, we can lay people off and just say, you know, we have to close this gap and therefore we actually now have to lay people off. So I'm trying to share, there's just a range of different options that we're gonna have to look at. So at the next board meeting, we can provide you with a, uh, recommendation.
Board members, I will remind you that we do have one more board meeting and then on the twentieth of April, am I correct, uh, Mr. McCoy? That's when we, we, that's when the vote is due, uh, our vote is due on a budget.
That's, that's the plan. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Stridiron, I see your hand.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I just had a question. I know last year there was a, a lot of layoffs in the cafeteria workers. Were any of those, did all those positions, uh, come back in this budget or are some of those layoffs still, uh, not filled?
So that's a different budget? So if you are asking about it, are we closing out this general fund budget and going into a different budget?
Mr. Stridiron, you understand that the cafeteria budget is separate. They, they kinda run through their own, their own.
Yeah, I know. I just wanna know if those people were ever brought back.
All right, they were. I'll let, uh, I see Dr. Spindler has her hand.
Go ahead, Dr.
Thank you. Um, so we are, as we started to have more students come in, we start to recall more, um, individuals back. Uh, some individuals are, uh, you know, have come back. We have restored, I believe, fifty-seven of the positions. And HR can probably, um, also give some more information on that. Our intention is by the end of the year to call one hundred percent of those people to come back and, and hope and, and welcome them back with open arms, um, that they're, that they wanna come back and work for the district and serve our students, um, as an integral part of our programming. So yes, our intention in the cafeteria fund is to restore those positions.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Padilla, do we wanna move on and go, um,
Yes, I'll have to pick up where we left off, the line by line budget and, uh, so if you guys just wanna, you know, get your documents ready. Uh.
I'm gonna tell you that we're gonna start by going back to sixteen twenty. That was one that, um, the board asked to go back to because there were a lot of questions. So um, whoever is taking care of the street screen, can you go back to sixteen twenty for a moment? And that's Operation of the Plant. Dr. Spindler, put your hand down in the thing. Thank you. Board members, in this code, I know, Mr. Stridiron, you had some questions before. Um, would you like to reiterate your questions?
Sure, from what I remember last time, the question I had was, do we have the need for more staff regarding, uh, cleaning? Because if we're gonna have barriers set up between students and teachers, who's gonna clean them? Who is going to, uh, there's gonna be a massive cleaning, uh, to be done almost every day to be able to clean the, the schools and the other buildings clean. So does this budget address those concerns?
Um, anybody, Dr. Dr. Spindler, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, so yes, as you can, in the earlier presentation today, we are restoring three cleaner vacancies and a custodian vacancy to help support. We also are purchasing, um, a, um, new machines that allow for a smaller nozzle to come out of the spray machine so that it can do, um, the surfaces such as the sneeze guards and locks, uh, much quicker and much more efficient. So we've been purchasing them this year and we'll be giving professional development to our custodial staff, um, because that is the quickest way to, to get them cleaned.
And you've checked with them to make sure that they know exactly what they're gonna be cleaning and have they give- they know exactly what they're gonna be cleaning, and have they given you the go-ahead saying, yeah, we can do this in the time period you've given us?
That's something that we, that Mr. Velez and I uh will work on uh with the staff.
Okay, I think our concern was also with the school resource officer. Um, on the, the thing that I'm looking at on the screen, is that put back in or not put back in?
Oh, I apologize for that. Yes, we were able to reestablish that at a much lower cost with the sheriff's department of sixty-three thousand uh dollars, and that has been restored. Um, I apologize for that not being there, but we did restore it, and we did receive a contract from the sheriff's office at a, a rate from uh that reduced from a hundred and two thousand to sixty-three thousand.
Thank you. Can, I, I have a question also on the buildings condition survey. I know that's something that we have to do every couple of years, and that's kind of a big chunk of money. Um, is that something that's being done this year, and so we don't have to budget for it in next year?
Yes, that is something that it's done every five years, and we have budgeted, we have it, we're paying it out this year, so we don't have to uh incur that cost next year. You are correct.
Thank you. Any other questions on this before we move on? And now we're gonna take a little jump, and we're gonna go to code twenty twenty, which is supervision regular school day. Are there any questions on this um item? Okay, I'm gonna move on to twenty, code twenty sixty, research, planning, and evaluation. Are there any questions here? Mr. Stridiron?
Could someone just go over the exact uh job titles or what they do?
Mr. Forget?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the job titles in this, it would be uh the division that I supervise and oversee. So it would be the Director of Planning and Accountability, uh, the support staff, and uh Ms. Onyx Peterson and her staff. So it's data, data and information services and planning and accountability.
Mr. Stridiron?
I've been looking at this for a while now. Do we really need Director of Planning and Accountability for a hundred and forty thousand dollars? Because if we don't, I'd rather use that for support staff inside the schools.
Madam President, it's my recommendation that we need that position.
Does any other board member have any comment on that? So thank you for your position, Mr. Stridiron, but I don't see any, any other board members supporting that. We're gonna move on to item um twenty-one-ten, teaching regular school day. Does anybody have any um questions or comments here? I do. This is where the seven teacher salaries come out of, and it's just a concern. I'm just gonna mention it. I, I know that there's not much we can do about it, but I really feel like that it's a hard thing to swallow. Anybody else? Mr. Stridiron?
Yeah, I agree with you, Madam President. I just really feel as if, if we approve the budget the way it is right now, we are putting the, the, the staff in the schools at a very difficult position. And i- it's gonna make everyone's job harder. Uh, I'd, I'd really rather put the resources in the buildings rather than other places.
Mrs. Maida?
I, I totally agree. I'd like to see it's, um, like to see us try to do something better.
Any other questions or comments on, on uh that budget code? We're gonna move on to code twenty-two-fifty, program for students with disabilities. Questions or comments? Mr. Stridiron? Mr. Stridiron, did I?
No, I, I just, it took me a while to get to the unmute. So I know that uh it's possible that we um, we have one vacancy in a, I believe it's a um, a top position and another person that's retiring over the summer. Uh, so what's the plan to address the needs of uh leadership in, in the special ed division? I know we have a, a great um team that works there. But uh in order to handle the amount of work that's required, I just, I just think we need to get some leadership, some more leadership there.
Yeah, so this was, you know, uh, one of the, another area, uh, having to make a difficult decision. In order to keep another position or prevent a layoff, we have to go down a central office administrator. So we are gonna have to restructure. What we're recommending is going down. Uh, not quite sure that's this code, by the way, but given the statement, uh, we're gonna restructure. We're gonna go with one, one uh exceptional learners director and instead of two. But that's a different code.
Any other questions or comments on twenty-two-fifty? We're gonna move on to code twenty-two-eighty, occupational education. Questions? We're gonna move on to code twenty-three-thirty. That's one of those that's plus or minus ten percent. So does anybody have any questions on that? Oh, no, that's not plus or minus. I'm sorry, I was looking at the next one. Uh, so we're on twenty-two-eighty. Anybody have questions? Mr. Stridiron?
So we have a situation now where summer school is, it may be the situation where we have kids coming back and we need to bring them up to par, up to speed on the loss that they have this year. But we are cutting the salaries by forty-eight percent. So are you planning on using some of the federal dollars for the summer school program for salaries or just um for programming?
Okay, so you're on uh twenty-three-thirty, so we'll jump to that one. Sorry, Mr. Stridiron, that was.
I thought that's what.
No, I, I made the mistake, so I apologize. So I'll go back to ACED. Let's go to teaching special, uh, teaching special schools. Anybody else, or anybody have any answer to that, to Mr. Stridiron's question?
I can answer it, Mr. Neo, if you'd like.
Go ahead, Mr. Bear.
Thank you, Board President. So we are looking at using uh some of our title funds to supplement this area, including our IDA funds, and we anticipate that the way in which stimulus money is structured, that they are discussing learning loss being a component of that, and we believe that we can fully fund this area in other ways.
Mr. Stridiron?
Yeah, as a follow-up to that, when will the plan for summer school be finalized? Because families tend, tend to plan right, right around May for the summer. And I really would like to see if we are gonna do five-day-a-week summer school and offer full-day programming, and you know, the teachers need to plan ahead of time. And so it's gonna take a long and a lot of resources to get this thing going, but what's the plan for summer school?
We have um an intention to provide a fully articulated summer program by the uh, the Monday we come back from the break. We're already working with staff to design the various components of this, and we've let, planned on doing all of our, our final proposal, as well as all of our uh postings through the early parts of May, of April, so we can have the program fully in place by, by the middle of May. So folks can start making plans, then start to advertise and provide a summer fair. So there's an opportunity virtual affairs, so families can hear about what is available.
Mr. Bear, I like the way you say fully articulated, but that to me means that summer s- high school, uh, summer school would be available for students uh moving up from grade eight all the way up to grade twelve, and that has not been the case in the past. Will that be the case this year because of, of the loss of, um, you know, a student learning uh because of COVID and other, other issues?
In the design phase, we are planning on having a program uh for students grades eight through nine. We are looking at a variety of opportunities, including the potential for credit for crow, crow, um, uh, for some of those students uh and understanding the learning loss. So normally we run about a two-day program. We certainly agree it needs to be longer than that in helping kids transition to our high school. So those, that's just one example of many that we are talking about as a group, and we will provide that final proposal in April.
I, I would really like to see it grades ending eight all the way through twelve because we can't forget our tenth and eleventh graders, because if we want to help them, you know, get across Academy field, we've got to do it right away and as soon as possible. Dr. Badiya, I see your hand.
Yeah, I was just gonna add to your point. Uh, we have to do that, and the federal money we know is targeted to do that as well, so that's very important. Uh, we're, you know, we're still in the planning phases of the ESYP, but also just want to know for our community who's watching, uh, we absolutely have to focus on learning loss, but we also should be looking at enrichment opportunities for students to keep them engaged. So what's going to be special in this year's program is that it's going to be a robust approach to address learning loss, but we're also gonna look at innovative ways to engage students who haven't been engaged in quite some time, who don't need remediation. They need to be pushed acad- academically. They need other kinds of experiences, given how everything has been closed down. So we're gonna continue to plug away on developing that program.
Mr. Bear, I see your hand.
Just want to finalize by saying that we can certainly provide a more substantive uh summary of this for the uh curriculum committee when we meet in April on our return from the break.
Thank you. Um, we're gonna go back to twenty-two-eighty because I jumped over that one. That's occupational education. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Okay, we're gonna pass on to twenty-six-ten, school library and AV. Questions, comments? Mr. Stridiron?
Thank you, Madam President. So I, I see in the breakdown that there's a librarian that will be, uh, it's a vacant position. Can you tell us what building that vacant position is for library?
Madam President, may I respond?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mrs. Moriarty.
I believe that's Foster Town.
So do, do they have two librarians there?
I'm sorry, Dr. Spindler.
Somebody?
Uh, may I respond?
Go ahead.
The, we will be filling the Foster Town vacancy position. Um, it Temple Hill has, has a vacancy uh as, as a librarian. Um, they have one there now, and they have a second vacancy. They've had it, uh, they, it's been vacant for some time now. We will not be uh recommending to fill it.
So, so the others, Temple Hill had two librarians, and now they will have one?
They haven't had two the past um couple of years. We may be able to structure uh a shared staff somewhere too uh for, for equity reasons, but at this, for the past two years, uh, Temple Hill has only had one librarian.
How many librarians are at Meadow Hill?
I believe there are two, and I think HR will have to confirm.
That's correct.
So if there are two at Meadow Hill, why would Temple Hill only have ones when they have similar sizes and needs?
I think that's part of the response she gave is, you know, there'll have to be some shared staff, so it'll go to one point five across both schools.
I don't, I mean, that, that doesn't seem very equitable to, to to make people drive from one building to another when you, I, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, we have shared staff all across the district that drive across campuses, so this, this wouldn't be unique.
I know, it, it's just not a good situation. I, I disagree with having staff travel from one school to another or for educational purposes.
Mr. Forget, I see your hand.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe this is a shortage area where we're struggling to recruit librarians as well. Um, is that correct, Mr. McLemore?
May I respond, uh, Madam President?
Sure, Mr. McLemore.
Uh, yes, that is a very hard, hard to fill area.
Okay, Mr. Walker, I, I see you're waving. Do you have a question on this or something before that I missed?
I believe he's frozen. I think he's frozen, ma'am.
Okay, um, thank you, a- and I'll come back to him when he gets unfrozen, okay? Just keep, remind me. Oh, he's moving now. Mr. Walker, did you have a question?
Goes back to the, um, has there been any thought about, um, having tutors come in during the, uh, during the summer to help with um students who have, um, who are not up to par yet, or maybe even a college student, college students coming in to help with the more advanced courses? And that way we could have double, we have a teacher, and then we have the, the um tutors who will follow up and oversee. That's all.
Thank you for the suggestion, Mr. Walker. That's a great suggestion. Um, we're gonna move on to uh code twenty-six-thirty, computer-assisted instruction. Questions, Mr. Stridiron?
Do we have a total number of students that do not have a device at this point? Yeah, there should be a, a good handle on that.
Madam President, can I respond?
Yes, I see, I, I see your hand now, Mrs. Peterson, go ahead.
All dis, all students in the district are currently one-to-one in their devices. Um, we currently have, uh, have a reef, a refresh cycle where students are given devices. So um as students even entered into the district, um, within a day, they receive a um, a device and have needed a hotspot. So all of our students currently are one-to-one.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Um, any other questions on that item? We're gonna move on to attendance, regular school day, twenty-five, twenty-eight oh five, and that's one of those, um, uh, ten percent less, more than ten percent less. Questions, Mr. Stridiron?
So I'm, I'm seeing these numbers uh go higher. So I'm assuming that we are hiring more attendance staff uh to make phone calls, or is it just we're moving it from one category to another?
Dr. Roman, would you like to uh answer that question?
Sure, Madam President. Yes, so with, with respect to this particular line, twenty-eight oh five, um, there were a number of attendance aids that were recoded, um, and as a result, that is the, the cause for the increase um in salaries.
Does every school have an attendance aid in it?
Would defer to Ms. Peterson to respond to that, please.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Peterson.
So our current attendance aids are distributed throughout the buildings based on need, um, what their chronic absenteeism rates are. Um, the reason why we do see this increase was that there was a need to have those very situations and around student support, calling parents, making sure we have those interventions. Um, I know that we also spoke about um, the fact that this is one of, one of our goals on many of our SEPs to increase our chronic absenteeism and family and community engagement. So this is why there's an increase of seventy-nine percent within this line.
So I'm assuming we have one at least in every building?
It's based on the need of the absenteeism within the building. So we, we do have some. I know that within each building, there is supports, whether they're um SEL, PPS, um, supports to assist in this. But um it is based on what the SEPs for the building and the supports that are needed.
So I would assume that would be a no. So I would assume that would be a no. I would refer prefer that every building has an attendance aid because we cannot have any students falling through the cracks. Because attendance is a major sign, bad attendance is a major sign that there are problems with the student's home life possibly, and we need to make sure that we do not let students fall through the cracks.
Thank you, Mr. Stridiron. We're gonna move on to code 2810, Guidance, Regular School Day. Any questions or comments there? I'm gonna move on to code 2815, Health Service, Regular School Day. Any questions or comments there? We're gonna move on to code 2820, Psychological Services, Regular School Day. Questions or comments? We're gonna move to 2825. Mr. Stridiron, I'm sorry.
It's okay. So I know there was a cut in psychologists and there's also social work. Not sure if this fits this category. So based on the discussion from before, are you saying that there is no need for this? One psychologist and one social worker that's on that FTE breakdown?
Dr. Roman?
Thank you, Madam President. As a result of the the PPS reorganization that took place last year, that was designed for efficiencies in terms of caseloads and supporting students' needs. At this time, we are we are maintaining the same levels as we had at the beginning of the school year. We are currently filling several positions in in the social, as as school social workers as well as psychologists. But at this time, in order to to close the gap, we had to analyze the needs and that was a reduction that was recommended.
Does every building have a school psychologist?
Madam President?
Dr. Badiya?
Dr. Roman, go ahead and answer that and then I'll comment after you.
Yes, to respond to that, at this point, yes, we currently have supports in every school. We're currently working to fill several positions, as I stated earlier.
Dr. Roman, can you share with the board the repurposing of one psychologist? So we'll actually. Can you just talk about the psychologist that was supporting in a different way, but now will be supporting cases across the district?
Yes, so we had we had several psychologists that were. Well, there was at least one particular psychologist that was repurposed and actually supporting more a social worker role. But in terms of district-wide, we have several psychologists that support district-wide needs. And that was part of the redesign that took place last year.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Stridiron? Okay, I see you nodding. Code 2825, Social Worker Services, Social Work Services, Regular School Day. Questions or comments? That kind of overlapped with the last one, didn't it? Thank you. So can we move on to item 2850, Co-Curricular Activities, Regular School Day? Mr. Stridiron?
Will will there be any? I know this is for next year's budget, but will there be any of this this year, any debate or solar car crew club for this this year?
Who can answer that? Mr. Bear?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if this should be my area to talk about. At this point, we're still analyzing that as we move into more in person. We did not provide debate late in the fall because of the fact that we didn't have the in-person opportunity to do so. But we'll certainly analyze the other two. There is some conversations about the crew club that we'd like to see happen. And I'm working with T Tree whether we can actually do the solar car this year, given all the parts that go into that, including the travel for students that are somewhat limited by the pandemic.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to code 2855, Inter-scholastic Athletics, Regular School Day. Questions? Mr. Stridiron?
I'm not sure if this is under this line or not, but is it a possibility to to recombine the athletic director and the health position like we had in the past so that we can actually have more help within the classrooms? Or is that not a consideration?
Dr. Badiya?
Yes, ma'am. No, that's not. That's not a recommendation. And when it was combined, we got requests multiple times each year to split them as it is in some cases in other districts, especially the size of our district, to ask one person to do both of those jobs just seemed insurmountable.
Madam President, you're on mute. There you go.
I don't know how to do this. Okay, we're gonna move on to code 5510, District Transportation Services. Questions? Dr. Badiya, you have your hand up. Do you have a question?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Let me lower it.
Okay, we're gonna move on to code 5540, Contract Transportation. Wow, that's a big, that's a big code there. Any questions? We'll move on to Employee Benefits. And there's a bunch of codes in there. They're go from 9010 to 9089. Does anybody have any questions on those? Last, we're gonna go to, I think it's last, code 9901, Transfers to Other Funds. Any questions about this code? Mr. Stridiron?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure if this is code for it, but at what point will all the money that we borrowed, the district borrowed for the capital bond, when will that start hitting the taxpayers? And do we have an idea of how much per year that will cost the taxpayers? Is there a chart that's prepared so that we can see like maybe four or five years out the impact to the taxpayers?
Dr. Spindler?
Yes, so that was presented in the Capital Bond Project when it was voter approved in 2019. The taxpayers won't see that until 2026. I do want you to know here that we are taking an approach to see where our projects are and how much money we need to borrow. We do receive about a 90% aid back for our capital projects. And we do have a significant amount that was coming off of our debt services. So there was minimal change that you'll see there. And that's why it won't be till 2026. I can prepare something for the board on what it would look like 2026 and beyond, if that's what the board wants.
Dr. Badiya, do you want a consensus if we want that?
Yes, maybe. I do also. We do still have the Capital Bond website where all of this information is housed as well.
So what I'm gonna ask the board is if they would like to have a report on the future tax implications? Is that what I'm asking for? I need a little help here. Dr. Spindler?
Mr. Stridiron, you said that you wanted to know what the impact would be after 2026, correct?
Yeah, similar to what you had where you said, okay, this this tax levy was gonna, Towne Newberg family or house would be $62 a year. That kind of breakdown. So we have an understanding of what really the long-term impacts are for the capital bond.
Okay, so I need a consensus on this. It's either yes or no. Mr. Levenstein?
Yes, and I believe that basically it was it was prepared as of when the pre-refereendum data was available.
So you're saying yes. Okay, I'm gonna go to Mr. Stridiron. Yes or no?
Yes.
Mr. Walker? Yes, no? Is he frozen? Mr. Walker?
I would move on, ma'am.
Okay. Where am I?
Back on Walker?
Yes, yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Maida.
Yes, but I think what the debt schedule was put in the weekly list, wasn't it, Mr. McCoy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Dr. Henderson? Dr. Henderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Santiago?
Yes, please. Thank you.
And I'm a yes also. So I see, Mrs. Maida, you had your hand up. Did you have a question?
No, I was, I'm sorry, Madam President. I just realized that the debt schedule was in our, in the weekly last week. Okay, that's why I had my hand up. Sorry.
Okay, Dr. Badiya, you have your hand up? You have something to say? Okay. So we've gone through all of the codes. We are now going to take a Meneo, two minutes. It is, oops, we're gonna come back at 9:01. So take a minute. Mr. McCoy, let me know when we have five.
You're all set and ready to go, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. We're gonna move on. Dr. Badiya, you have a resolution?
Yeah, I was just quickly. You always give us the Meneo minute right at the right time. So thank you. Okay, so I have item 2.4. And this is a resolution to adopt the 2021 Revised Districtwide Safety Plan.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Dr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Howard? Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Meneo?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes. Thank you.
We have a walk-on?
Yeah, can I get a, can I get authority to, or can I get a motion to add an item to the agenda, item 2.5?
I think we have to have a board member do that, right? Can I have a board member add?
I'd like to add that resolution, please, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy, will you read it, please?
Need a second.
Oh, sorry. Have a second?
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McCoy?
Be resolved that the board hereby authorizes its attorney, Shaw Pearlson, May and Lambert LLP, to appeal the decision of the New York State Public Employment Relations Board in case number U-36149 to the New York Supreme Court, Albany County, pursuant to the terms in the retainer agreement between the district and the law firm.
Thank you. Questions or comments to add? Roll call to add?
Dr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Meneo?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
So now I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussions? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Meneo?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Dr. Henderson?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my items for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Padilla. We're gonna move on to public comments on agenda items. Mr. McCoy, I believe we have one.
Yes, Madam President, there was one comment submitted on agenda items. That comment was submitted by Ms. Nancy Gross. Dear members, I am writing this email in regards to the policy board agenda item for crowdfunding. I am one of the many teachers in our school and the district that uses Donors Choose to bring much needed supplies and projects to my classroom. Thanks to Donors Choose and donations from public and friends and family, I've been lucky enough to bring many resources to my classroom and school building that benefit the children of this school. These projects include, but are, but are not limited to flexible seating, literally, literary, literacy, resources, science materials and books. While I understand the need to manage the resources that come into our classrooms, I am ready to let you know that adding additional steps to these projects will likely, likely result in us losing match offers, losing funding and delaying getting these materials into the hands of our students. Oftentimes, teachers are given opportunities to get double or triple funding gift cards towards our projects by participating in P D and philanthropists who scour Donors Choose to donate. Adding additional steps for us means that we, we could lose these chances. The, the materials that we get from Donors Choose are the property of the school as outlined in the policy of Donors Choose. These resources have provided the teachers with many wonderful chances to expand the bu- horizon for the students in the classroom, especially in these unprecedented times. When making school an incredible experience for us students means more than ever. I'm happy to speak with you about this further if needed, but hope that you would reconsider since it means many teachers will no longer put forth the effort to bring these projects to fruition since it's, since time is very limited and valuable and we do not have the extra time these days. I hope you that you would consider tabling this agenda item until you have a chance to speak with teachers whose students are directly benefiting these projects. I'm happy to show you what I've done with Donors Choose. Thank you. That's the only comment submitted, Madam President.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to my section for your consider, for our consideration. I have four items. Uh, item, no, six items, items four point one through four point six. Would any member like to separate out any of these items? Mr. Levinstein?
Um, item four point six, please.
Sure, and Mr. Uh, Stridiron?
Item four point one, four point two, four point three, and four point five.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna go through each item individually, okay? So let's start with four point one. Um, I'd like, I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussion on four point one? Mr. Stridiron?
Thank you, Madam President. So I read through the, the policy and I was trying to, to see what the changes were. They're not really highlighted. But on page two, where it talks about the formal and formal and informal assessments, and it gives an example, four point oh, three point five. Can it, can it be more clear? I think the policy would be better if it was more clear that it would go all the way to zero. Because I think everyone should know that when a, when a teacher gives a zero on an assignment, whether it be formal or informal, that automatically becomes a fifty five. It's, it's really important to know that, that as a parent, to know that when you see a grade of, say, sixty five on a report card, you're not really getting a true sense of what this, what your child knows. So I think the policy should be clear and it should say all the way from four point oh, all the way to zero in, in point five increments.
Anybody would like to discuss that? Any other discussion on that? Any other questions on that? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Oh, was this?
Ms. Maida?
Is this a roll call for, to make the change or not?
Well, I, I, hold, yes, Mr. McCoy?
I'm, I was just gonna call, I was just gonna call a roll. I'll wait now.
Okay, so you're, you're suggesting a change, Mr. Stridiron?
Yes, just to make it clearer that it goes from four point oh all the way to zero in point five increments.
Okay, so I need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, can I have a roll call to change?
Ms. Maida?
Um, I, I'm not sure I understand. You just want a, a piece of paper expla- just showing the gratings just like we had? We had a, a system where it said four point oh, three point, three point five is, I'm confused. I'm sorry.
Mr. Stridiron, would you like to explain it a little bit better?
Yeah, it's, it's just the second paragraph of the policy itself. It, it only goes four point oh, three point five, three point oh, two point five, two point oh, et cetera. It should just go all the way to zero. So that it's clear to the people that are reading this policy that it goes all the way down to zero in your point five increments. It, it needs to be clear because it's not right now. And that's all it is. It's not changing any structure here other than adding more words so that it's clear.
So wouldn't that be in a regu- in the regulation, not the policy? I, I don't know. No, it should be in the policy, you're saying.
Mr. Forget, can you help us out here?
Yeah, I, I guess I need clarification as well. Are you saying on the zero to four scale, it needs to go all the way to zero because it does?
It, but it doesn't say it in the actual paragraph.
But the grading scale part that's here provides it from four point zero all the way to zero, and we embedded the grading scale chart into it.
I know, but in the wording in the second paragraph, it should be clearer.
More clear.
Yeah, I, I, it's just a semantics, but I think it should be clearer because if someone's reading this, they might say, okay, just from four point oh to two point oh, and then says et cetera. Well, does it go all the way to zero?
Mr. Bear, let's, let's see if Mr. Bear can clarify this.
So I, I actually understand Mr. Stridiron's point. Um, he just wants to be clear to families that those are the point five increments that are in the zero to four scale and wants them to be laid out accordingly. I have no issues with that. I simply ask as the English teacher, uh, in the room that we change it from E G to I E then? Cause I, uh, all of the above, like all of it instead of just as examples. So I think it's fine, by opinion. He just wants to simply lay out all the examples of the five point, the point five increments that a student can achieve on an individual assignment.
That's what I understood. Okay, Mrs. Maida, um, Mr. McCoy, let's do the roll call, okay?
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Meneo?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Dr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Howard, excuse me, Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Okay, so now we have an amended, um, uh, amended resolution. So now we, I have to do what, Mr. McCoy? I need another, um,
Roll call as amended.
Okay, roll call as amended.
Ms. Meneo?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Dr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Stridiron, do you have a question or is your hand up just because you're gonna ask twenty five more?
Both. I could, no, I, I just wanted to ask whether the grading scale is also gonna be used for credit recovery classes. That's it.
Anybody?
The intention is to be used for all, uh, credit recovery, uh, credit report classes.
Good, thank you. We're gonna move on to item four point two. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Questions or, uh, questions or discussion? Anybody? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
No.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Dr. Henderson?
Absane.
Mr. Howard, excuse me, Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Meneo?
Yes. We're gonna move on to item four point three. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Mr. Mr. Stridiron?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm gonna try to phrase this question as delicately as I can. So I, I know every year at the end of the year, the students that get an average of sixty three or sixty four. Now, I'm not sure if everyone is aware, but there is a practice that occurs that there's a list of those students. And those, that list is brought around the school in an attempt to make that a si- those grades a sixty five. First question I have is, is the superintendent aware of this practice? And does this policy provide for that practice to occur?
No, I'm not. But again, I'll try to reframe your question. Uh, so the attempt to support children to pass at a minimum of sixty five by doing what exactly? I'm not, I'm not really clear on the question altogether, but can you reframe or clarify?
To simply ask a staff member to change the grade from a sixty three or sixty four to a sixty five. I don't, I don't think that is in the best interest of the student, but I, I think if, if, if this is truly occurring, that it is very concerning.
You think it's concerning that a child with a sixty four, that a conversation with a teacher can occur?
Not that a conversation can occur ahead of time, but not at the literal last day of the school year before the grades are finalized.
Are you asking me to look into this because it's a practice?
I would assume since it's fairly common knowledge that you would have been aware of it, but I guess, I'm guessing not. I would, I would like to, as a parent, I would like to know that, but as a board member, I would certainly love to know that.
All right, is that all the discussion we have on this item? Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Stridiron?
No.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Dr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Meneo?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
We're gonna move on to item four point four. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Dr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Meneo?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
Yes.
We'll move on to item four point five. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Dr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Meneo?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
I'm sorry, this is about the crowdfunding. I did have, I did wanna, uh, vote to, uh, table this until we can have this discussion further because I don't, so.
Mr. McCoy, um, we already started to vote. Uh, can Mr. Stridiron ask to table it now?
That'd be out of order, ma'am, but that's not my call. It's yours.
Well, so far, how many votes did we have?
One, two, three, four, five, six votes in affirmative.
So, uh, you're upvoted, uh, Mr. Stridiron, so it's not gonna be tabled. So you're gonna either vote yes or no?
I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote no.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Padilla, you had your hand up for a reason?
Yeah, uh, just, I just wanna quickly, I'm gonna follow up with Ms. Gross, um, just to, she is correct. She, she is one of our teachers that does apply and, and gets a lot of things. Um, she's not aware, uh, of how this is actually gonna benefit the district, and so I'm gonna follow up with her.
We're gonna move on to item four point six. I'd like to, uh, entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Mr. Levinstein?
Thank you, uh, Madam President. So I, I have a, a couple of points for this particular resolution, so this, um, fair, recent history, we, we encountered a couple of issues. We had our pool, which was taken out of service. And the, the district, most of the district was in, placed in the yellow zone. So we couldn't have home games. So the district went to other school districts for help to assist us in having games and practice and meets. So if, this policy, if adopted the way it is, Madam President, may I comment?
You're frozen, ma'am.
So my suggestion would be, I, I would hope, um, that through a, uh, for emergency use, that the superintendent would be able to, um, okay, another school district using our facilities for, um, educational or sports purposes for the, just for the idea of us being a hospitable neighbor who they helped us out to.
Thank you. Mr. Forget, would you like to, uh, help us with this one?
Sure, Madam President. So in policy fifteen hundred, if you look at paragraph three, in the middle of the paragraph, the fourth sentence begins with the terms, "The board delegates to the superintendent to designate the authority to approve use of facilities by local school districts and institutions of higher ed on an emergency basis and so on." I guess what I would recommend based on what I hear from Mr. Levinstein is that we suspend the entire policy except for paragraph four, from the fourth sentence to the conclusion of that paragraph.
So, Mr. McCoy, how do we do this?
I'm gonna ask for some help from the attorney, because right now the policy's not up there. It's just a resolution for, to suspend the use, but I mean, we could just use this resolution, but add that part that Mr. Forget talked about, just add that into this part about municipalities. That would probably be the easiest way.
Ms. May?
I think we need a separate resolution to, uh, suspend, uh, the portion of policy fifteen hundred um, other than the one section having to do with the, uh, delegation of authority for emergency use by the superintendent.
So you need a motion for, to do what Ms. May just said, ma'am?
Yes, to add, to add a resolution to the agenda. To suspend.
Wait a minute, what are we doing with this resolution first?
Uh, vote on it.
We'll vote on it and then, Mark, hang on a second.
Sorry.
We vote on this and then we vote on an amendment to something that we just suspended?
Uh, no, you're gonna vote on suspension of, of, of one of your board policies on the use of facilities by the public except for the portion that has to do with the authority of the superintendent to allow the use by school districts in an emerg- other school districts in an emergency.
Okay, Mr. Mu- you got that? Mr. Levinstein, is that okay with you now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, Mr. McCoy? Uh, so we have something on the floor that was written. So we have something on the floor that was written. Now, what do I have to do to amend it?
I'm going to have to refer back to the attorney, ma'am. I'm confused, and I apologize, but.
No, 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 you're fine.
Somebody, the one on the screen, are we voting this on the screen?
Yes.
All right, I'll take the roll, ma'am. Dr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Manao?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Now, this is the portion where you're, somebody's going to have to add the agenda item about the policy.
Okay, so now, Mr. Levinstein, you want to make a motion to add, and then we'll have Ms. May say what she, we need to add?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to listen to Ms. May and her recommendation.
To add.
To add, where?
A motion, yes, to add a, a resolution to suspend the board policy, I think it's 1500, on public use of facilities, except for the provision delegating authority to the superintendent to allow emergency use by other school districts as written in the policy.
That's what I said.
Thank you. So can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, questions or discussion? Because I'm very confused at this point. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Manao?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron? Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Dr. Henderson?
Yes.
Then you voted to add it to, to the agenda, and then you have to vote on it.
Okay, so now I need, I'd like to entertain a motion to, for this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Manao?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Dr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
That concludes, thank you. Are we done? That concludes my items. We're going to move on to board committees. Mr. Howard had to leave. All of the items were discussed in policy committee that are on the agenda, which we just went through thoroughly. Library Committee, Mr. Stridiron, please.
You're muted, sir. You're muted.
I unfortunately could not make the last meeting, but I did go through the agendas, and I thank Mrs. Burton for, for running that meeting. Basically, what the meeting was, the director went through her report and outlined all the items that were occurring in March. Outlineed the reopening of Phase Four at the beginning of April. And the committee also discussed the, the budget that is supposed to be voted on. So, Mrs. Burton, if there's anything I missed, you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, Mr. Stridiron. The only other I would add is the, she provided, the new director, Mary Lou Carolyn, provided an update on the annual report, which is required by New York's SED, and Dr. Spindler will be helping with that report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have the Personnel Committee. All items that were discussed at Personnel Committee are on this agenda tonight. We're going to move to Buildings and Grounds Committee. Mr. Levinstein?
Thank you, Madam President. So Building and Grounds Committee met March 17th. We discussed with Mr. Ramjug the capital bond projects, including the NFA pool, Valesgate, and Windsor demolition, and the Heritage Middle School construction. Then we also discussed with Mr. Velez, the MERV 13 filter orders and PPE supplies, possible new truck purchase, building and grounds, equipment needs, and their budget priorities, district-wide building fire inspections and lead-water testing, and we also discussed the old Bonville School Building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levinstein. We're going to now move on to our deputy, Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Forget.
Thank you, Madam President. I have item 6.1 for your consideration. It's a resolution to approve the participation rate improvement plans for Horizons on the Hudson and Temple Hill Academy.
I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Mr. Stridiron?
I know this, this only pertains to two schools, but is it possible that we can get the, the rate of, of attendance at all the schools in a, really it's just a concise chart so we can see what's happening this past year?
May I respond, Ms. Manao?
Yes, Mr. Forget.
Mr. Stridiron, this is really about the participation rate on the New York State assessments, the 95% participation rate. So I just don't want to confuse the, the issues, but your request does make, is appropriate for this because we tied participation rate to chronic absenteeism. So I do understand why you're requesting it, and I will work, if the board requests that, that particular data on attendance for the schools, I'll work with the Sonics Peterson to get that for the board.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Stridiron, let's vote on this, and then I'll do a consensus whether the board wants that, that attendance data, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. So are there any other questions on this 6.1? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Manao?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Dr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Stridiron, I'm going to get a consensus on an attendance report, but I need for you to be kind of a little bit more specific. Do you want it month by month, school by, what do you want?
I just want the chronic absentee rate, I, I believe this information is already compiled per month at each of the schools just for this, this year.
So, can you talk to me about what you mean by chronic absentee rate? Do you want to know?
There's a, there's a chronic absentee rate that's compiled every month by the administrators at the school, and they submit it to Dr. Badea. So that information, I don't think ever gets to us. So it would be good to know, because the higher the chronic absentee rate, I think the more need that the stu, that the school will have in this upcoming year.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Peterson?
I just want to make the board aware that the chronic absenteeism rates come from state, the state education department. And currently, they have revised a lot of the attendance requirements for district as was presented to you. I was currently working on a report, a quarterly report that was requested. So I just want to be, want you to be mindful of that as well. I'm already working on a quarterly and trimesterly report for the board as agreed upon previously. So I just want to make you aware of that.
So, Mr. Stridiron, Ms. Peterson is working on a quarterly report. Will that suffice your request?
When can the board expect that report? Because if this data is presented every month to the superintendent, why can't the board have it?
The, the chronic absenteeism rates with the state, there, there's just been a lot of recalculation based on COVID and the state expectations. We do, we do report out attendance, and I, we do that on a quarterly or trimesterly basis. So that's not a problem. I'll focus on that report.
Mr. Forget?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Stridiron, may I recommend that we give you the attendance rate for the school? The attendance rate for the school will give you the, the true attendance for the students enrolled in the building, whereas asking for a chronic absenteeism rate skips kindergarten and only starts at first grade. So I think, and I don't want to, I don't want to speak for you.
No, I understand what you're saying. What's the difference between chronic absentee rate and the attendance?
So chronic absenteeism rate is based on a student in, in attendance at 91% or more, less for the school year. So any student who is absent more than 18 days out of the 180 days of a school year would be considered chronically absent.
I think that's important to know.
What we do, I think, okay, what we do on a monthly basis is we try to figure out what's the, what's the, the rate each month, but it does not include kindergarten, Mr. Stridiron, and that's what I'm saying to you.
I, I, it's fine with me if it doesn't include kindergarten, because I think it, it's, it's important to know. If, if this data is provided to the state, we should actually see it.
Sure.
You're muted, ma'am.
I'm going to do a consensus, a yes or no, whether you feel that the board needs the data that Mr. Stridiron is suggesting. Let's start with Mr. Stridiron.
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
No.
Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Maida?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Dr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Santiago?
You can move on from her.
Okay, and I vote yes. So what do we have, Mr. McCoy?
Six yeses.
Thank you. So whoever's, Ms. Peterson, thank you for that report. Mr. Forget, would you like to continue?
Thank you, Madam President. My next item is 6.2. It's the resolution to adopt the 2021-2022 district calendar.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
I see Mr. Walker is signaling second. Questions or discussion? Mr. Levin, Mrs. Maida is first. Go ahead.
Um, we had an email today about the Rosh Hashanah. Is, is that on this district calendar? I'm sorry, I can't pull it up. Um, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Forget. Thank you.
Rosh Hashanah is on here, but it's only for one day of, of a two-day holiday.
And, and we received an email today, and it was about the second day for Rosh Hashanah, asking for that. And I don't know if we should consider that. Apparently, there's the two days we usually have. I don't know what we would have, what we would do if, or if anybody disagrees.
Mr. Forget's suggestion?
The calendar that we are presenting was created with Dr. Padilla working with the superintendents across Orange County. We have maxed out as much of the, the days as possible at this point. We are going down one emergency day to do it. We have the teachers coming in on the 30th and the 31st of August to start. I'm not really sure where I would pick up an extra day.
Okay, no, it's fine. I just, I just wanted to make you aware of that. That we had received that email. Thank you.
And we, we also collaborated with the Newburgh Teachers Association and shared this with the NASA unit and CSEA. So there was, there was representation to design this.
Now, I, I apologize. Thanks, Ms. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Maida. Mr. Walker, I see your hand, but I'm going to call on Mr. Levinstein next.
Thank you, Madam President, and I, I'd like to read what I wrote to Central Office when I, when I saw this calendar. The Newburgh School District is a culturally diverse school district. We have decided as a district to be more culturally inclusive, to respect, support, defend, honor, educate about the numerous cultures, religions, heritage, heritages, sexual orientations, et cetera, in our community. Imagine if we could honor students and staff of different backgrounds. How about if we could teach to the celebration, teach to the culture, and close schools for respect for the following holidays? So we have holidays, we have the Christian holidays of Christmas, which is five to 10 days, with six days this year. Easter is five days. The Jewish holidays of Rosh Hashanah, two days, Yom Kippur, one day. African-American holiday, Juneteenth, which is added this year. The Muslim holiday of Eid al-Fitr, which was one day, which was added this year. How about the Asian holiday of the Lunar New Year, which is one day? The Hindu holiday of Diwali, which is one day? And indigenous people, which was the old Columbus Day, one day. So we could be a leader in being culturally responsive. We could support the varied ethnicities and religion. Maybe we could help put the brakes on hate and prejudice. How do we find these days? We would have to go with not having the recently created President's Week vacation. Again, a district like ours with substantial blacks, Hispanics, Asians, Muslims, Hindus, and others deserve this. My hope would be that maybe this can be part of a curriculum that helps create strong, caring, civic-minded young adults. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McCoy, we had discussion, so now we have the resolution on the floor. Let's do a roll call. Mr. Levinstein, if you.
Mr. Walker had a question, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Walker, go right ahead.
Yes, I'm afraid I've forgotten. Is, are there two Muslim holidays, or there's Ramadan and then the other? The Al-Faidh?
Yeah, the most holiest Muslim day is in the calendar.
Okay. I'm fine.
Thank you, thank you. We're, Mr. McCoy? So we're going to do a roll call on the, on what's standing on the floor.
Ms. Santiago?
No.
Mr. Stridiron?
No.
Mr. Walker?
No.
Ms. Burton?
No.
Dr. Henderson?
No.
Mr. Levinstein?
No.
Ms. Maida?
No.
Ms. Manao?
No.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my items.
Thank you, Mr. Forget. We're going to move on to our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Mr. Bayer.
Thank you, Madam President. Curriculum and Instruction Secondary has one item for your consideration. It is the resolution to approve participation in the high-risk sport of lacrosse for the spring.
I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Mr. Stridiron?
So I see in there it says be resolved that weekly COVID-19 testing surveillance be conducted to high-risk sport athletes in lacrosse. What percentage of the athletes will be tested? Should it say it in there?
I want to speak for Mr. Forget.
It would be 20%.
It would be 20, 20%, which is the surveillance testing that we've been doing currently. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Should that be in the resolution?
It was not in the previous resolutions, ma'am.
Okay, so.
Term surveillance would, would cover that, wouldn't it, Ms. May?
This, this is Mr. Shaw. The surveillance at 20% would be standard right now for surveillance testing.
Okay, any more? Oh, Mr. Levinstein?
The question I have, and I was just, the last high-risk sport that we, we approved. I just would like to know if it's just varsity, or varsity in JV, or, or freshman and modified. I, I think that's important to go along with, with the sport itself. I think that's important to go along with the sport itself.
Madam President, we're doing all, whatever the sport is associated with the age group of the students, we're doing all of them. So we're doing JV and we're doing varsity of football, for example. It's all the groups within that high-risk sport area that are a part of the athletics program.
If we ever have to do this again, I suggest that those are listed in the administrative content so that we really understand what we're voting on. That would be really helpful. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes, earlier, please correct me if I'm mistaken, was there some conversation about there being a sport or two where some of our athletes had COVID? Where it was put on?
Mr. Walker, let's vote on this, and then you can bring that up later on. We really have this item on the floor. Okay.
I get it.
Thank you. Any more questions on this item? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Stridiron.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Abstain.
Ms. Burton.
Yes.
Dr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein.
Yes.
Ms. Maida.
Yes.
Ms. Mania.
Yes.
Ms. Santiago.
Yes.
Mr. Bear.
Sorry, that was a long one item. That concludes my audience this evening.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services, Dr. Roman.
Thank you, Madam President. Under Student Support Services, we have one item for your consideration, recommendations for CSC CPSE committees.
I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussion on this item? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Burton.
Yes.
Dr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein.
Yes.
Ms. Maida.
Yes.
Ms. Mania.
Yes.
Ms. Santiago.
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron.
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes my items.
Thank you, Dr. Roman. We're going to move on to our Assistant Superintendent for Finance, Dr. Spindler.
Thank you, Madam President. I present to you item 9.1 for your consideration.
I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Burton.
Yes.
Dr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein.
Yes.
Ms. Maida.
Yes.
Ms. Mania.
Yes.
Ms. Santiago.
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
That concludes my items for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Spindler. We're going to move on to our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Mr. Macklemore.
Thank you, Madam President. On the human resources agenda, I have items 10.1 through 10.14 for your consideration on tonight.
Would any member like to separate out any of these items? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Dr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein.
Yes.
Ms. Maida.
Yes.
Ms. Mania.
Yes.
Ms. Santiago.
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Burton.
Yes.
That concludes my items, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Macklemore. Now, Mr. Walker, I'm going to get back to you with your question from before, so don't think that I'm ignoring you, but I'm going to finish with Mr. McCoy, and then we'll get to your question, okay? So, Mr. McCoy, we're going to move on to our Clerk of the Board, Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Madam President. I have the approval of the minutes from the March 9, 2021 meeting.
I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Levinstein.
Yes.
Ms. Maida.
Yes.
Ms. Mania.
Yes.
Ms. Santiago.
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Burton.
Yes.
Dr. Henderson.
Yes.
And moving on to 11.2, if you're interested in running for the Board of Education, the packets are available in my office. The seats that are currently up for election are currently held by Ms. Burton, Ms. Santiago, and Mr. Howard. This year, the signatures to reduce have been reduced. You now need 50 signatures on the petition to get onto the ballot. The signatures on the petition would need to be due back into my office by April 28 at 5:00 p.m. That concludes my items, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Now, Mr. Walker, you had a question. You want to bring it up now quickly, and then we'll move on to public comments on non-agenda items.
Will that resolution be voted upon right now?
What resolution?
Another time.
What resolution, sir?
I'm sorry, the agenda item, I'm sorry, because my question dealt with something that was discussed earlier.
No, you can bring it up. You had a question, and I cut you off, and I'm just trying to be responsible and fair.
I was within protocol, that's all.
Okay.
I'm just confused with what we discussed earlier about the possibility of something having happened on another team, and now we might just vote to that. I would love the lacrosse team play. I'm just conflicted here about what I've heard, and I don't know what is true or untrue anymore.
So I believe that you're talking about some of the, one of the teams that, what we talked about before, Mr. Stridiron brought it up, about one of the teams testing. Mr. Forget, would you like to talk about that for a second?
We did have one team quarantined.
All right.
Thank you. We're going to move on to public comments on non-agenda items. Mr. McCoy, I believe we have one.
Yes, ma'am. We have one comment submitted by Irene Hughes. Comment is as follows. "I'm a parent of an eighth-grade student in the district, and I'm writing today to express concerns about the proposed start of school and the end times for the district. Per the superintendent, at the last board meeting, the plan was to bring a formal proposal to the Board at this meeting. It seems that that is no longer the case, as I understand, the district has not decided to make any significant changes in the fall 2022. I'm grateful for that consideration, but I still felt it was important to share my concerns. Before getting back into any specific concerns related to the challenges this proposal creates, my biggest concern is the lack of public outreach. This is a way too big of a change that impacts Newburgh families to be made without public involvement. I recall a survey going out at one point, but that's hardly a sufficient discussion. I realize that the American Pediatric Association recommends that high school begin after 8:30. I can certainly see that some value based on evidence provided, but it only works if there is a system-wide change, not one district. My concerns are shared by many families in the district, and I hope you will consider these issues as you continue in the decision-making process. Number one, many families rely on older siblings to help with childcare for younger siblings. An eight- or nine-year-old coming home to an empty house is unacceptable, will cause significant financial burdens for parents who will need to locate children. Additionally, any after-school programs will now have a young child in school for nearly 10 hours a day. During the winter months, young children will be waking up bus stops in the dark. Number two, sports, if we switch our schedule, if we switch our schedule, no other district would/should be expected to change sports schedules to accommodate our new times, which create a series of problems. Away games played at other schools require scholars to leave early or not be eligible to attend. Under a newly proposed athletic attendance policy that families were told about in a meeting about a month ago, the district plans to move forward with a non-specific absence plan. It doesn't matter if the absence is excused or not. Once a student hits a certain number, they are no longer eligible to play, especially in a COVID environment, when students could be quarantined through no fault of their own. How is that fair? Also, how would this work if a soccer player needs to leave during the new sixth period to get in a game at Monroe? Are they marked absent, excused or otherwise? It reflects negatively on them per this new policy, not to mention the most important part, that they would be missing class. Later events, particularly in the fall, would require additional lit fields, which we don't have outside of academy field. Number three, practicality. While it's lovely to believe that biology and sleep rhythm is the reason for insufficient night's sleep, in reality, technology and distractions play a large role here. I fear that a late school start does not encourage/fatilitate the notion that it's okay to stay up later rather than for purposes it's intended for. Many scholars work after school. This would make it impossible or create longer work/school days in effort to make up for lost time. Homework. For a good portion of the school year, my son, in a pandemic, was getting two to three hours of homework most nights. I don't agree with it, but I can't change that either. His saving grace now is that he does not get out early enough to complete the work and still be able to see the light of day on a bike ride or a game of basketball in the driveway. Kids still need to be kids, even if they're teenagers. Who will be home to ensure that the middle school and high school scholars actually get up for school? I know in non-COVID times, I'm at work by 7:00 a.m. Why, I'd argue that an 11th or a 12th grader could be responsible enough to get themselves up and ready for school. I don't think that it's fair an assumption for a 6th grader. If that solution is to wake them up before we leave, we have defeated the purpose. That concludes the one non-agenda item, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Maida.
Yes.
Ms. Mania.
Yes.
Ms. Santiago.
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Burton.
Yes.
Dr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein.
Yes.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good evening and see you in April.